Good evening. My name's Doug Brown. I'm sitting in as the acting chair for Bill O'Neill, who cannot be here this evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM and take a roll call of members first.
Tom Devaney.
Mark Meering.
Drew Carter.
Very good. I think we've got a quorum. No need for any alternate appointments at this point. We're under pressure, I understand, because there's a Bruins game in an hour and a half. So we'll try to be efficient tonight.
Actually, you could actually swear in Tom Hoops for tonight, since Bill is absent.
Sit down for one.
Oh, you are?
Yeah.
Okay, well, then, let's do that.
Okay.
Tom, you're amenable to that, I presume? Okay. Any changes to the agenda?
Yes, there are changes that have taken place since it was posted. So Case P 2503, for Changing Seasons, agent for Richard Lundey for Major Site Plan Design Review has been continued to the November 18th meeting. So if anybody is here for Mr. Lundey's application, that's been continued to next month. Case P 2530, for Prospect Mountain, for Duca and Barshard, that was a lot line adjustment. That has been continued to the November 18th meeting. Case P 2532 was for Prospect, Prospect Mountain, for the Sedwin LLC. It was for a minor subdivision for a condo conversion. There were some plans that were missing. Mr. Zuzgo says that he's submitted. He has plans with him, but I have not done the review because there weren't, in my opinion, it wasn't a complete application at the time. So I just wanted to confirm with Mr. Zuzgo if he's okay with the continuance to November 18th. I'm getting a yes. And Case P 2533, for Prospect Mountain Survey, for Morehouse, for a final minor subdivision. They need to go in front of the zoning board. So that has been continued to November 18th. And under Other Business 3A, I'd like to add a memo dated October 20th from me to the board, and it's regarding the return of some escrow funds.
Very good.
That's it.
Okay. Before we start, again, for all the guests this evening, also the CIP Committee, if you could sign in sheet in the back area would be appreciated sometime during the evening. And then also, for people who come up, please use the mics and speak into them directly so that we can get good recordings. With that, we have the joint, we have a joint meeting this evening with the Capital Improvement Program Committee. We'll walk through the CIP program for 2026 to 2031. You have a second on that? All in favor? Okay.
Thank you, Tom.
Good catch. With that, I'll turn it over to the Capital Improvements Committee.
If you can press that button right in the middle. There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To the Planning Board of Alton, on behalf of the 2025 CIP Board Capital Improvement Program, who includes members Andy Morris, Select Rep., Beth Varney, Budget Committee Rep., Roger Sample, Planning Board Rep., Paterbor O'Brien, Citizens Member, who's also the Vice Chair, Karen Arenberg, Citizens Member, and myself, Frank Rich, Chairman of the Committee, as well as Jesse MacArthur, our Planner, Liaison Coordinator, and great person. So our role, as stated, as a stated purpose as a committee, is to give visibility to the Planning Board, the Board of Selectmen, and honor Alton citizens the needs of our town's infrastructure and capital equipment by preserving public health, safety, welfare of all citizens and its community. Second, to avoid undue spikes, increases, and any unpleasant surprises concerning infrastructure and capital equipment for the town. Improving communication and coordination among our department heads, Planning Board, Budget Committee, and the Board of Selectmen. Anticipate and monitor the demands of capital improvements growth within the town. Identifying scattered and premature growth issues that may be coming to the town and trying to mitigate those, those issues before they become an issue. Develop a fair and distribution of capital costs by distributing costs over a period of time fairly to each department in the town. And finally, to build a foundation in the future for the growth management and any impact fees associated with that growth. As far as I know, we still do not have, gratefully, any impact fees that I'm aware of. But that certainly might be something that may come to play down the road as we grow, as the town grows. I'm sorry. And finally, to support the economic development by which communities such as Alton, with good, sound, physical health, high qualities of public facilities and services that can and will attract businesses and industries to balance our community and its As I have mentioned in previous discussions with this board, the CIP is an advisory committee only. We really have no say. We just advise. And we bring together information for your pleasure. The document in front of you is an advisory document. This document is intended to give visibility and act as a guide only of the projected needs of this community that provide adequate, prudent, and responsible services to our Alton citizens. The committee would hope that the Planning Board, the Budget Committee, and the Select Board give credence to this report when determining future costs and expenditures while trying to stabilize the tax rate to its citizens of Alton now and in the future. So with that introduction, please let me share with you the committee's findings and discussions, recommendations, and its final program report for 2026 through to 2031. The committee met five times, on August 4th, August 18th, September 15th, September 22nd, and October 7th. The committee, through our very capable and talented liaison, Jesse MacArthur, reached out to each department head to submit their capital equipment and infrastructure needs, as she has done in the past, in advance of their in-person meetings. I'm, again, happy to report that the committee met with each department head in August and September. There was much discussion, deliberation with each department head, again, especially with the Highway Department and the Fire Department, which virtually 90% of our capital improvement costs go to the, to them each year. The committee believes that our department heads have a very good understanding of the needs of our citizens, and in most cases, not all, but in most cases, have acted prudently with our tax impact dollars. The department heads gave the committee insight of future cost inflations, which is very important for us to consider, on the equipment and infrastructure costs, so that we were able to plug those in, in the cost as best we could with estimates. We'll have to do that each and every year. The inflation, as you well know, can jump expeditiously in some years and then have no inflation whatsoever in other years. But I will tell you the capital costs, and you will see it in the report. If you look at 2025 versus 2026, and we have a little cheat sheet for you, if you want this, this other sheet, kind of indicates to you what we increased because of inflation. Okay? So please keep that in mind. The committee also believes that our department heads are actively looking for innovative ways to offset the Alton tax burden to its citizens through grants, leasing versus buying, buying good used equipment, seasonal rentals versus buying the equipment when we only may need that piece of equipment for two or three months, private funding, which really needs to, to be addressed in some, in some way, in fashion, and newer initiative road construction and maintenance initiatives that have come into play with asphalt, gravel, and things of that nature. Our, our DPW head is looking at some of those innovative ways, and we've actually started to utilize those. I think you will see cost reductions when we're building our roads and maintaining our roads. I hope, I hope that will be the case. So based on those findings and working through the capital cost needs of the department heads, the committee is reporting that the rate impact, on average, for the next five years, will be $1.20. And that's on average. Okay? If you look at the five years, it's $1, $2, $1.17, okay? And the next year, it's a little bit higher. The next year, it's a little bit lower. You know, you, you'll see some differences, and that's because of capital equipment not going into those particular years and whatnot. So let me reiterate, as I did last year, that approximately 1.5 million goes dedicated for our road repairs and maintenance. And that's approximately 79% to 80% of the tax impact for the year. And if we don't take care of our roads now and in the future, every single year, we will pay the, the piper down the road with the distressed roads, distressed bridges, and this town will not be in the, what I would consider the reasonably good order that it is in today with its roads and infrastructure, bridges and whatnot. This year, especially, the committee found itself in a quagmire, over the Fire Department's request to increase its building fund by $300,000 each and every year on the five years. And to be honest with you, we, we had a very difficult time with that. And there was much discussion and deliberation with the Fire Department on why. And, and, and what was a surprise to us was that there was a warrant article that we never knew that was coming for $300,000 at the Board's Select Board, and I guess this Budget Committee approved. And the citizens approved it as well. So that was a surprise to us. So the $300,000 was for 2025. And I'll be honest with you, depending, we really struggled with the $300,000 increase every single year. And it really pushed out and whacked out our determination to try to keep the tax rate impact to a minimum. So I, and the, the committee felt that, that we were not going to include that $300,000 for the next five years in the report. So you will see that missing from, from what the department head requested, who suggested that that was recommended by the Select Board. Our concern was, if we're going to build a firehouse, this should be a bond issue. This should not be part of the capital improvement. And why are we reserving something that's going to be close to $2 million when that bond issue is going to be significantly greater than that if we build the appropriate firehouse? Just didn't make sense. So we felt that the tax impact was more consistent in the capital equipment and the roads, not this reserving for a firehouse that is, that is no way going to be $2 million bucks. It's just not going to happen.
And did everyone come to the same?
I think there was general consensus that, did everybody agree? I don't think so.
No.
You know, we, but I think by, at the end of the day, we determined we were going to take it out. Okay?
I think it was, I think it was actually a Select Board member that mentioned that it would be a bond issue. I-
Mr. Shea, I believe, spoke up and said that it would be a bond issue.
Well, then, I don't understand why we would reserve $2 million for-
Exactly. And that's why we didn't.
And that, that was one of the reasons why we just didn't do it. Now, the $300,000 that's there, that could be used for engineering, architectural, you know, get everything ready. So we felt that there was enough, enough money in that fund to do the appropriate things that need to be, to do, based on, I had a long conversation with the Fire Chief privately, and his, his needs are, in his estimation, we need approximately 5,000 square feet, additional square feet, okay, to accommodate what is needed. My question to him was, 5,000 feet for how much length of time? You know, I mean, and he, he really wasn't able to answer that question. Would that last, that 5,000 new feet and a renovation of the existing building, would that, would that suffice it for the next 20 years? He said, I'm, I'm not sure. I said, I think you need to really start thinking about that and pull a committee together to think about the future needs of this community over the next 20 years, 25 years. Because if we're going to build that firehouse, we should make sure that it's got good expansion to it. It's nothing to put up a building. 5,000 feet, I've done it too many times, 5,000 feet versus 10,000 feet, and then just use the rest of the 5,000 feet for storage. But you got the building up. Then you expand into it as needed, or you put something else in there. Just thoughts. I didn't want to belabor that. But not everyone, Doug, not everyone totally agreed with that. Okay? But as a committee, you know, we took a, a vote, and this is, this is what we came up with.
Okay.
And I got to tell you, it would have added another 10 or 15 cents per-
Right.
-per year, based on that 300,000 addition. One of the things we did keep in there was the ladder truck, okay, which is a big number. But we kept it in. Okay? So, anyway. Where the hell did I leave off? That's what I said. So I will again note, or reiterate, that there is no money reserved for large facility expenditures. I mentioned it last year. It was mentioned the year before. Okay? We need to keep that in mind. This town is in a very enviable position that we do not have any bonds outstanding right now. So finally, based on the committee's findings and report, we feel that the town and its citizens are being adequately served by its town employees and volunteer boards, and we are and continue to be on a responsible path for our citizens of Alton. And that's my report. Questions? Oh, I wanted to also bring up one other thing. In our handbook, Capital Improvement Program Policy and Procedures, I wanted to put this on the record. And this is one paragraph. "The CIP plan shall be based on information submitted by the town of Alton's departments and agencies, and shall take into account public facility needs indicated by the prospective development shown in the master plan. The CIP committee may alter the department head's suggested year of implementation and/or method of financing when they finalize the CIP plan. The commit, CIP committee may decide not to recommend, not to recommend inclusion of a project or a CIP plan." And that's exactly what we did. So I guess you can fire me if you don't like it. But I, I will be looking for, I will be looking for back pay.
So I would, I would just question this sheet here. You called it a cheat sheet. These weren't items that were added. These were items that were changed to date per expenditure? Is that correct?
What this is, Pat, you want to explain what we did, please? Okay. Pat was kind enough to build this, this model. So let me, let him explain it to you.
Good evening, everyone. Pat O'Brien, CIP Committee. So I wanted to put this together last year. We had a lot of discussion around, like, what was added to the plan. And it was with good merit, because we have this ideal dollar per thousand, and I think it was you, Mr. Brown. I apologize. I didn't know at the time. I was like, I remember this conversation happening. And it was, it was important that we item, figure out this number. So we have this dollar per thousand at the bottom, but it's constantly adjusted by the overall valuation of the town. So the question was, what changed above? Because the numbers went up, but so did the valuation. So what changed up above to be able to, to get here, right? Because as the numbers keep increasing, what are the changes? So I went down through the document that was presented at the deliberative session last year, and the document before it came to you folks tonight, although I do believe there were some last-minute changes, Jesse? I'm not sure.
There were changes just to the CRF balances.
Okay, all right.
And it actually didn't change the, the tax rate at all.
I don't think we could change these numbers at all.
Okay. So I basically went down through all of the, the lines. So whether it be FD, HD, GM, anything that had a change to it, I put on this piece of paper, and, and the dollar figure change. The one thing that I will mention, over and above what Mr. Rich has already mentioned, was that there were a few projects that weren't plotted on the plan that we had to add this year. So the projects themselves were there in the overall document. The projects were there. The dollar amounts were there. But the actual expenditures weren't in the given year. So we did have to shift some projects unexpectedly this year to be able to still come out with the plan that you see today. So that unfortunately did delay a couple of projects, but thankfully, we were able to catch it before the year of the expenditure, at the very least. So hopefully, some of the more important projects can move forward. But as far as this sheet goes, any of the changes to the HDs, the GMs, the FDs, the ITs, that's what these are, from the deliberative session to today.
Can you help me then?
Sure.
So thank you for doing that. That is what we wanted to try to do, was tie it back to revenues.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I see that here. So revenues went up.
Mm-hmm.
In the middle of the page, help me from here down. So my, my interpretation is, revenues based on valuations, you know, went up by 14 million.
Mm-hmm.
The expense on the two different plans went down. And you still have an increase in, in dollars per thousand.
I don't disagree with you, and I don't know where that number is. And I'll, I'll be straightforward.
Isn't it backwards? It has to be negative, right?
It, it is. It's, it's definitely down. It's, it's 3 million, 3.8 less.
But then why did the cost per thousand go up?
That is the question that I can't answer to without diving back into that document and the formulas. So I can only assume that it, it, there might be a mathematical-
Yeah, it's got to be, it's backwards. It seems in the wrong direction.
Right. In the, in the total-
While you're doing that-
Gross, gross capital cost of project equipment in that line, there is an error somewhere. And unless I have the actual Excel document, I don't know.
It, it may be the firehouse itself.
No, that wouldn't do it. Because I did the math on here, and I don't think that gets you even close. But, but anyhow, I mean, thank you. Just, first off, thank you guys for doing this.
Of course, yeah.
Thank you for leading this, and everybody that was involved. I mean, awesome job. But that's kind of the key quest, key question we got to get a, kind of get our hands on, right?
And, and the other thing that we, we have to kind of contend with, too, is we do account for the school in here a little bit. So I got to, we got to make sure that the, there's no math error with that. And, and I apologize. I didn't go down through and, and add it all up manually. I'm kind of relying on the spreadsheet at this point for the, for the math side of it. But I would say that is something that we probably have to deep dive into next year, is the spreadsheet and the formulas and that kind of thing.
One more quick one, then? So assuming, assuming that this is wrong, which is fine, I can, I still get you. Right? If, if it does turn out that the math up top's here wrong, but the bottom part is right, this, this 8% increase, 8 cent, excuse me, increase, is, is it going to continue? It's not a one timer, right?
So the-
And then on top of the eight is the 10 cents the next year.
Yep.
Also continuing.
And there's, there's, I've chatted with some other communities that do CIP, and there are several that add automatic escalators in there for inflation. And we don't do that. And I don't know if there's something, at some point in the future, if, once we kind of get things stabilized, if we want to look into that. But I will say, one of the biggest challenges is, and we kind of shed light on it this year, is we only look at this five to six-year period. There could be something in that next year that is substantial that we're not looking at.
I understand.
So I, I do think next year, on, on top of looking at the document as a whole, while we may present a plan for five years, I really think we, as a, as a committee, need to look at 10.
But, but that's a different, and I agree with you. Different question, though. Like, in 2026, 8 cent change, very bottom of the page, that 8 cent continues, and so that the 10 cent change in '27 is actually an 18 cent change, right?
No, 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 no. That's, that's just that one time for that year. I'm sorry. Yeah, it's not cumulative. It's not cumulative. No, no.
And it's just the inverse.
And, and the other thing is, I mean, you could look at these next year, and that 10 cents might be 12 cents, because things get shifted around, which brings me back to this paper. These aren't things that were just added. These are things that just got moved. The backhoe has been on there.
These aren't, these aren't additions. These are just changes.
Changes, right.
Any changes.
Just changes.
If it was new.
It's a summary of new stuff.
Nope.
Why things are more money.
No, nope.
The streets sleeper.
Right. And that's how we get, that's how they get the numbers.
This is mostly inflation change.
By pushing stuff.
Right.
So whether, so then that leads us to a new question, which was, like, last year, one of the big changes you said were the, the police cameras because the- one of the big changes you said were the, the police cameras because the free time period had elapsed, now we needed to pay for them. Is there anything big like that going into this year or next year on this? No big changes? That was 250 grand or something?
Well, this is, this is smaller and it's one thing that kind of catches my eye because we decided that we were going to give them $40,000 a year for cruisers. So, so he'd have, and now I read the thing and it says, and equipment.
I believe.
We didn't say equipment, we said cruisers. Unless that means the equipment in the cruiser, I.
I think it was equipment for the cruiser. Okay, because you have the cruiser and then you have the equipment you gotta put into the cruiser, okay?
Well, you know how things go, people see this, say, equipment, police equipment, oh, well, we'll, we'll get a, we'll get this. And it's. It, it just the same thing happened last year. We, we said, okay, do this. And then when it hit the paperwork, it was something else.
Yeah. Roger, I think.
And when we say, this is what we're gonna do, that's what I want to read.
We gotta be a little bit more specific to next time. Okay, when we write this out, I think what.
I'm not fighting fault with you, I'm just, I'm just saying that I'm, I'm.
I got it, I got it. It, these are all, um, helpful so that, you know, we, you know, we, each year we'll just keep trying to work, work on it.
Right.
But I, I did want to make, mention that we, we do have a, about a $14 million increase of valuation. Now, it's going to be very interesting for next year. Because we're probably up for reassessment. It's a, I think we're into the fifth year coming. And we're required by state statute every five years to be reassessed, okay? Wolfboro's going through that right now and, uh, there's, there's a lot of, lot going on in Wolfboro, you know, a lot going on. Valuations in most cases have doubled. Doubled. Okay? So. This new number could be five million bucks next year. Okay, with the new assessments? Because we're, our, we're at 61% of our, you know, of, we're at 61% right now in terms of our values in this town. Wolfboro was at 55%. So that's why it doubled.
Thanks for the good news. But you're not planning to spend that on next year, are you? You're not planning to, is, is your message to us that you're gonna add that money into the, the CIP plan?
Absolutely not, okay? The tax rate is supposed to come down, but do we think it's gonna come down double?
Let's hope so. That's why you're in charge.
We think it's gonna come down double.
We get the point.
Dear Lord. Okay, anyways, that's for another discussion. More questions?
So then the only real big change that you guys, this front and center, is the police.
Correct. And, and that came from, um, they're in kind of a tough spot right now. They've got some cruisers with in excess of 150,000 miles on them. And to date, they've been using their revenue fund to be able to change out the fleet. But unfortunately, the, the revenue fund is, it's fairly unpredictable because they don't know how many details they're gonna get over the course of a year. Uh, and they had previously done the fiber optics all through town. Uh, and, and that, of course, when that project was complete, uh, there wasn't as much revenue coming in. So they're in a position right now where, um, they've been able to purchase a few vehicles, but they're gonna be on hold for a bit until they get some revenue. So again, with the cruiser that they have right now with 150,000 miles on it, they just did a motor and like a whole new steering system in the front end and like all kinds of things that, uh, probably wouldn't have been done. So the idea was to be able to put one cruiser in CIP to be able to be purchased every other year.
Every other year.
As like an emergent and still utilize that revenue fund, but this is kind of an emergent fallback. So if they get to year two, this planned $80,000 expense and they've had an increase in revenue, then we can stop the funding to this account. And just hold that single car in reserve. Uh, so when they get into a situation like they're in right now, they could have just replaced a car versus.
Did you have a similar discussion with the fire department regarding equipment at all? Because it basically looks like pretty much the same plan in terms of earmarking equipment that they had in 2025 now in 2026.
So I had a very, very frank conversation with the fire. I said, do you want 1.8 million in reserves for a firehouse that should be bonded or you want, do you want to eliminate some equipment, you know?
And what was the answer?
So. He says, I, I, I would really not feel good about, and Pat chimed in also, that would not be a good, a good thing, okay, for us to change our equipment plan. And so we kept it. And we did increase the, um. Uh, the inflation of this ladder truck. I hope, my fervent hope is that maybe we can find some private funding, you know, um, some, uh. High net worth people that might want to put their name on a fire truck.
Right.
You know, or, and or, um, years ago we went for a grant, but maybe we can find another good used one like we did, uh, years ago. We, we're challenged because the fire department needs a, in most cases, a dual axle ladder truck becomes a, a huge issue, okay, for them to maneuver. Okay, so a single axle truck, which are not, there aren't that many made, new, one, two, okay, and there aren't that many good used ones, you know, we wanna, we gotta be careful.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? I personally like to compliment you on, we had a spirited discussion last year and the methodology that you've come back with, I think really shows that there was really an effort to really tweak things and improve it for the better. And so my personal compliments for a job well done. It's a, it's a process and it'll get better and better, but a great first step.
I have to commend committee, you know, the committee has been together for a while. So it's, it's easy for us to be able to go back and forth and banter and respectfully disagree with each other about stuff and not get into, you know, uh, you know, uh, difficult thing. I will also say, we have a great person in Jesse that pulls this all together. Thank you, Jesse, you know? I mean, she really does pull it all together and, and, uh, it makes it much easier for us, Karen, myself, Pat, to be able to, uh, look at this and say, okay, and, and Roger, you know, uh, we've been doing it now for a while and I, uh, I'm happy to report that, she makes it very comfortable for us to be able to, and if we ask for something, she gets it, you know, she finds a way to get make it do. It's not easy to get these department heads to, to come when we need them.
Pretty good, any other points?
Mr. Quickley, I, I did the CIP for seven years. And, uh, I gotta admit that what you're producing is a quality product that went far beyond. And the time it takes, you know, it's, it's a very effortless position, you know? Everyone says budget, and I'm like, God, I hate you, you're, you're taking money out of my pocket, you know, but, uh. It's grateful to have quality information because it's, it helps everybody in town.
Um, we, I think this town is on a very responsible prudent trap, okay? If we can keep to this plan and if your boards, please look at this before you make decisions, okay, on expenditures, you know, say, well, wait a second, what's that gonna do for, to our tax impact so that we're not struggling like, you know, um, with this 300,000 bucks per year? You know, uh, I think we were prudent about it. We need, you know, we, we still went up eight cents, 10 cents, 12 cents, you know? But had that 300 grand been in there, it would have been double that and.
It goes beyond that. This is now something that is being sought by the selectmen and is now being used by the budget committee and other groups. So it is a working tool and that's the whole purpose.
And it, it's, that's all we can ask for is that it's an advise, all we're doing is advising and asking people, take a hard look at that before you make a, a decision. Yeah, yeah, take a hard look.
So one thing we still need to do is establish a public hearing date, um, for CIP to do an open presentation to the public. And I wanted to propose November 18th, which is the next planning board meeting. Would that work for the committee?
Hold on a second. Why wouldn't have this been a public meeting?
Because you have to introduce it first and find out about it. We can't approve it before we have a seat.
Yeah. It's.
Not yet.
Yeah, it's good for me. I think we had already, um, decided, or we were informed was the 18th, goodness, I think everybody agreed that we could, we could do it on that day.
Okay.
Thanks, Doc.
And if needed, we'd put it 19th as a snow date. Probably premature to be even saying that word, but just in case.
Okay.
Keep that in abidience.
You know, for me, that's print spaghetti day, so, you know, I mean, I.
Okay. Very well done, thank you.
You're welcome. Do we need you to vote on that?
Not tonight, at the public hearing, they'll vote on it. At the public hearing, they'll vote on it.
Oh, at the public hearing? That's great. Thank you very much, John, appreciate it.
Well done.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. HP 2531, again, is a final minor subdivision in the rural, rural zone for Sean Dunphy, Esquire agent for Walter P. Borowski Realty Trust.
2530.
2531.
I gotta recuse myself for this one.
So this project's to add two additional site areas to locate two manufactured homes designated as Site 56 and Site 57 on the property.
Thank you.
And the first responsibility for the board is to determine if the application is complete.
Good to see you. Tough act to follow. We love you.
Easy for you to say. Good evening.
I missed, I missed the first part while I was talking with Mr. Rich.
Uh, Jen, identify yourselves, please.
Sure, I'm John Bissau, I'm in for Mr. Dunphy, and this is Walter Borowski, the owner of the property.
Very good. There are some waiver requests.
I would address completments before we do the waivers, is my suggestion.
Any questions from the board about completeness?
I believe in the review, there was a comment about the, uh, New Hampshire DES subdivision of land approval, that a copy should be provided? Did we get that?
Yes, I actually spoke with, um, Mr. Borowski the other day. He provided me a copy of, um, printout from the website. So yes, he has received that.
Guess the other question for me was that there was no indication of future development beyond this, any intent in that direction?
There's none at the, at the moment, though. It, as you can see from the plan, a lot of it's open space and it's got wetlands issues, so I don't know, no intention for that now.
Well, I'll make a motion to accept the application complete.
Any? All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Now there are some waivers, right? Again, for roadway and driveway profiles, as I understand, the, the roads are already in existence.
They are private roads and aren't there. No new roads are being proposed.
And again, the driveway site distance analysis. Requested a waiver on that.
Yeah, if you, as you can, you can see where the, the drivels are proposed, so that, um, waiver deal was deemed appropriate.
Yeah. Any other questions from the board on waivers?
I think since they're already there, it pretty much answers itself.
Somebody want to make a motion then to approve the waiver?
Can I just make a comment, Mr. Chair? So I actually had a question on the waiver for F, where it says all setbacks have been previously provided. So the setbacks are indicated on the plan?
Correct.
So I don't think that that would need a waiver. If you're providing it.
You mean because it's on the plan?
Correct.
That seems.
So I would feel safe to cross that off, that that's not needed.
Right, and, and yeah, and you can see all the setbacks are the same for all the systems that's.
Yep.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay.
So then there's, this, this, those two waivers and specifically on site distance analysis. And then also the. Drive, driveway profiles, correct?
Is that one listed on that?
It looked like there was one for monumentation and then, uh, a couple related to the road, which we've talked about, and then that one.
So there's only two listed?
There's only two that I saw. I think on monumentation. What else did you have?
I'm looking at the, the summary that was attached to the application.
Yep. I'm just trying to find the checklist. Let's see. So I'm just gonna read from the checklist. So. A request was from. Section 7D14, and that's the location and type of all proposed and existing survey monuments. So that's actually C, that's the first one. Then there was, um, section 7D1E1, 2. And 4. and 4.
Correct.
And those have to do with, um, the road.
That's right. And then the last one we just talked about, which was the setback, which we don't need.
Correct.
That's right.
Just wanted to make sure they were all listed.
Yes.
So that, that's a total of four then?
Correct.
Any questions before we try to move on whether we grant waivers or not? Someone want to make a motion then?
I do not have the numbers for the, uh, the three dealing with the road. Didn't you say we didn't need to do the 714?
The last one that has to do with F setbacks.
F setbacks is not needed.
So the ones that have to do with the road is Section 7D1E1, 2, and 4?
Right. B1E1, 2, and 4.
Second?
Se-. Yes, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes.
Then I think, did you address the, the monument one? 7D1, or is that separate?
7D1C, yeah, we should vote on that one too. Thank you.
Yeah, so, okay, can we add to that motion, Tom?
7B1?
D, D as in dog.
7D?
Yep. Small c.
Small c. I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes.
So, essentially, we're here, not a, I don't think it's a heavy lift. You have the plan. Essentially, the Eagle breast community, you probably all know it better than I. It's been here since, uh, 1986. It is currently 55 manufactured homes on approximately 150.
Fifty-seven.
Uh, I'm sorry, 57 acres, yeah, it has 100. So it's 57 acres, 55 sites. And what I was alluding to is DES says it could handle 157 sites on that property. So that's where the 157 was coming from. It obviously provides desirable, affordable housing for folks in the community. And what we're proposing to do is add simply two lots or sites, I guess, as it's more appropriately called in manufacturing housing language. 56 and 57, as shown on the plan. The location doesn't really impinge upon existing open space or anything like that, so, sort of, there won't be any significant exterior change, really. And what it obviously allows is to spread the costs associated with maintenance of the property amongst 57 owners where it's 55 now. So, try to help maintain affordability and like that. So, I don't, as I said, I don't think it's a very significant modification. Where we've been through the process with the ZBA, um, which took some time. Uh, but we, there, they gave us the approvals we needed and DES is on board. So we got that approval a long time ago. And other than that, I think all we need is your blessing on this site plan.
Mr. Chair, can I just interject for a moment?
Please.
Did, did we announce that Roger recused himself?
Yes, he did.
He did? Okay, I was standing here. Okay.
Not there.
I know.
There's another record right there.
Yes, he did.
Okay.
Whether he, the mic recorded it may be a question mark, but.
So certainly entertain any questions. Um, Mr. Zuzgo is here, who did the line surveying work that's in front of you. I think he can answer any questions if you have it in your hand.
I have a question for you. So there's a 50, the 57, the, the lot size is big enough to accommodate, under the current rules, 28, mobile homes. You're at 55 or 57?
This would be 57.
But you're adding the two to get to get a 57. I know the zoning board approved that. Are they all rental properties?
The, the, it's a manufactured housing park, so the houses are owned and the lots are rented.
Lots are rented, but the houses are owned.
Yes. So, individual owners, ma- manufactured homes, they come and go. Your sort of tax benefit is about, I think roughly $1,200 tax revenue per unit.
So it'll add 2,400. That's what I was getting toward. All right, thank you.
And they are over 55.
Thank you.
And what's the estimated time to construct the facilities?
56 would be done within 30 to 60 days. 57 would be sometime next spring, probably June.
So within a year?
Yeah, within a year.
Build those buildings and sell them, and they'd rent. Is that how that works?
The buildings come from Pennsylvania, the homes.
Well, go that, that.
He improves the site and then bring them in.
And you, you in turn sell them to whoever's going to live in them, but you rent them the land. Is that right?
Attach them to the slab.
Is that how it works?
Yeah.
Yes.
So the scope of your work essentially is the septic systems, the slab, and then utilities?
Then the house comes in.
Right.
So the lot lines that are depicted in the existing conditions, um, obviously there's a, a variation with the addition of 56 being sandwiched between 33 and 34. So those.
It's taking a piece, so it's, it's kind of, I, I think it's, to call them lot lines is a little strange because it's really a site, right? It's one piece, it's, from your perspective, it's one big piece of property. And these sites are required for manufactured housing purposes for the difference, the distances between them. And so 56 is taking a piece of the existing Site 33 and the existing Site 34.
And are those a butters? I, I guess that's a fair term.
Technically, I guess, neighbors?
Uh, neighbors. Are, are they aware of the intent to these lots in?
Yeah, we know, we allocate specific areas for each home.
They have like a yard.
And because of our spacing, the, the quote-unquote lots are much larger than the adj- allocated area. The allocated area is, you know, 10,000 square feet as, as required by zoning. But our general lot size is much larger than that, so.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
No, I, it seems like they're taking all the proper steps to get to this point.
There were no issues of departments. It will look pretty good in that respect.
Right, nope.
Yeah, fire and police are, are fine with it.
Yeah. Public input. I was going to say, I guess, is there anyone here from public that wants to provide input?
Roger Sample, I thought I would get up and speak for the project, but the project pretty well speaks well for itself. Thank you.
Anyone else from public that wants to speak? Mr. Shea?
I love these things. Yeah, Richard Shea, member of Board of Selectmen, but speaking strictly as an individual, as, as I, amazing, huh?
You know.
As I, uh, look at this application, I know there's been some background, I don't know the details, and I can't comment on the legalities. But it looks like it's an opportunity to add two units of relatively affordable housing to the town's housing stock with no measurable negative impact. So I hope the board will view this favorably. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Otherwise, we'll close public. Any final points from the board?
Mr. Chair, I think the board should address the thresholds for active and substantial development and substantial completion.
So again, I think with respect to thresholds, you said 12 months from the date of approval for completing the, the active and substantial development is what I heard. And that would be substantial completion. Correct?
It could be for both.
Yep.
Sounds like they'll be delivered well before that and be complete anyhow, right?
Done before.
So it'd be total completion.
Total completion, yep.
Just one more thing I just wanted to point out.
Yeah.
Um, under the section entitled Plan Review. So there are just some items that should be added to the project narrative. And some corrections.
The narrative.
Or additions to the plan. Yes, there was a couple of things.
In terms of description for further subdivision potential?
Yeah, there's, there's, there's just some.
Yeah.
Descriptions to add and some things to just update on the plan.
Okay. Good. With that, anyone want to make a motion?
I will. I'll make a comment first. It seems odd to me, thank you, Mr. Shea, for getting up and speaking, but it seems odd to me that folks coming in here to, to put together a whole new manufactured development park are held to the rules of two per acre. And because yours exists, it's not. But with that said, I agree with everything Mr. Shea said. And I agree with the decision that the zoning board made. So I'll make a motion that we approve Case P25-31 as submitted. Period.
With conditions?
With, with conditions.
Conditions that you discussed.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brings us to the second. Roger, you're back.
Back.
That brings us to the second case for the evening, P2534. Final minor subdivision in the rural zone for, uh, Robert and Sandra Wyatt with Prospect Mountain Survey Paul Zuzgo as the agent.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I'm here doing a three-lot subdivision for Sandy. I subdivided this lot first time 20 years ago. I've been, I know this lot quite well.
Showing your age.
Yeah. We're taking off two five-acre bus lots for her grandkids. The remaining land, um, I do show a proposed house lot.
Can we do completeness first, before you get too deep into the weeds?
Please, let us get through our root steps. So, the, the board needs to determine if the application is complete.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any waivers?
I didn't see any waivers.
I showed topo on the whole lot, I believe, most of it. We didn't, we didn't do, uh, I did ask for waivers, didn't I?
Oh, yeah, 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 I take that back.
Yep.
So jurisdictional wetlands, uh, location of proposed parks and other open space, areas of 25% slopes. What I said.
For the mother.
For the.
Right. And I do show, the, the, the wetlands were delineated again 20 years ago for the first 200 feet in when we did that subdivision. So, so on the mother lot, I do show the wetlands and I do show a buildable area between the wetlands and the road. Just so that I can show that it's, the remaining is still buildable. And Sandy doesn't have any plans of selling that. Her plan is to, when she goes, she'll do a boundary line adjustment with two grandkids with the remaining land. She just doesn't want to give it all to them right now.
No, I was just trying to find my waiver list. I don't know if I can read here.
Oh, here.
Is that the Bleach Field and all the well radiuses?
Yep, they're all on there. 4K area. Lots are over five acres, so I don't need state subdivision approval.
No, I was just referring to the Bleach Field being in the well radius.
Where? 4K?
I'm looking at this map here, I see the house, and it looks what I'm assuming is the Bleach Field.
Uh, the 4K area is in front of that. The house is within the well radius, the proposed house.
Oh, oh, so, oh, the septic's in the front.
The bigger square is the 4K area.
Oh, okay, good, good. Let me get the picture. Is that disproportionate, or is that just for the, for the drawing, the, the septic field is bigger than the house?
It's not the field, it's a 4,000 square foot area.
Area.
Suitable for septic. And that's what, usually what the state requires.
Right, right, yeah.
Well, it's, it's well above what a septic design. It's just a receiving area.
So let's go to the waivers.
So.
Was it on the.
I'm sorry.
On the back of the project narrative.
That, that they're not listed in the planner review?
That's why, at first, I couldn't find it.
Ordinarily, they are.
Yep.
Because I, I, I don't have a problem with the request for the, for, make a motion, but I can't miss the numbers.
You have a copy of the project narrative? You have a copy of the project narrative, Tom? It's on the opposite, on the other side.
7D-1.1, 7D-1I, 7D-1J, and 7D-1N. And I would make a proposal that we accept those waivers.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
The floor is yours.
Oh, I already went over it pretty much already.
Can you start over?
Sure. We're taking off two five-plus acre lots. We don't need state subdivision approval. I do show the 25% slopes, there aren't that many. 4K areas, well radius, driveway, all the driveways are 200 plus, tight distance both ways. Of course, it's the dead end, there's only two other houses on the other end.
What are the contours? I don't see any of them labeled.
Um... Could be some numbers there, if not, I can put them on if you need them.
The plan's, the plan's tough to read.
It is difficult, I agree.
So it all slopes down from this end here, all slopes down here into this little brook. And it goes under Jesus Valley Road down into the big swamp.
Any snowmobile trails on this?
There are trails, and I do show them on this overall plan. There's some trails here, there's actually a hiking trail, and there are some, but there are snowmobile trails too on there, right? He's hiked them all.
Does Sandy like snowmobiles? Yeah. I just know that sometimes when you get new owners, they don't like snowmobiles.
Well... Snowmobile club's got to go to them every year and ask permission.
Yeah, and we do.
With that?
And we do.
Yeah. Get some.
And the best enforcement of the snowmobile club?
Yes. What's the club in Alton?
Mount Major.
Mount Major.
You got to wait for the public. Come up and sit with him.
Any comments on future subdivision?
There will be no future subdivision, not on this lot. There's no more road frontage.
Over, okay. There's a comment from the assessor on numbering.
Yes.
It was a little cryptic to me.
Yes. So I think, I think what, I was having a discussion with him, I think what should be listed on the plan instead of, instead of applicants or the surveyors assigning the lot numbers, that's the assessor's job.
Assessor's job, okay.
So it would be best if it was, you know, proposed lot one, proposed lot two, or proposed lot A or B, you know, sort of like a generalization instead of the actual assigning of the lot.
Did he have to come up with lot numbers?
Yes, yes.
So what are they going to be?
Yep, yeah. That's what that means. Yep.
So from now on, just put proposed lot one, proposed lot two?
Yes, please.
And then wait for you guys to tell me what to put on the Mylar?
At the end, or it can stay as proposed lot one or, one or two. Yep.
Okay. So you want that changed on this?
Recommend to you that the test pits be numbered on the drawing to correspond with the data that was provided. Test pits one, two, and three, if you don't know what they are on the drawing, which ones one, two, or three.
In the data, does it say, I thought it said where the, where the lots were?
No.
No.
No, just that it's test pit one, September 6th.
Hey, so... So I'll change that.
Any other points from the board?
I'm pretty happy with what they've got here.
There's about a dozen items under the plan review that would need to be incorporated as well.
Yep.
And that looks good. We're good on lot standards, utilities, and driveway?
Looks like it's, the lot standards don't apply because the size is right in the middle of our requirements, so.
That's funny how that is.
I brought it to you guys' attention four years ago, so I'm going to use it every time I can.
Updating the regs at some point.
Onuments. You good on that? Points. Anyone from public here? Please come forward. Yeah, if you could identify yourself.
Sandy Wyatt, I'm the owner. These two plots are for each of my grandsons, excuse me. They grew up on Jesus Valley Road, and this is just for them to build their homes and raise their families on Jesus Valley Road.
Super.
Dumb question. What Jesus was it named after?
Jesus Valley.
No, but why did, was there a Jesus who lived there?
Sure, yeah. He actually lived in the house that Ruben's in now, and then he bought, built the house across the street, and his last name was V-A-L-L-E, and the town just put a Y on the end of it because it, it was originally Rollins Road, and there were too many Rollins Roads in town, and then it became Molly Swamp Road, and my father didn't like that. So then it got to be Jesus Valley Road. That's right. And in Hampshire, in New Hampshire, it's Jesus, it's not Jesus. So it was Jesus in Imogene Valley that owned Ruben's house, and then the one across the street.
Only Guilford with no U.
With no U.
Because it didn't have spelled Guilford.
Mm-hmm.
And so we have G-I-F.
And I have to explain, in fact, today I had to explain why I lived on Jesus Valley Road, it was not a religious community. Yep, and I just tell them Jesus was my neighbor where I went up.
Now you know the rest of the story.
What's the story with the, with the artwork, the art at the end of the road?
The art?
You know, if you go up Jesus Valley, you take the trail up, the thing with the, the crosses with the shirts on them?
Shirt people, that's Leslie.
What is, what's that all about?
That's just something she likes to do. People, people come and they, people put those there.
Oh, they do?
People come from, you know, all over and, and, and put those there, and Leslie goes and she, you know, some that are like torn and, you know, when, you know, just, she repairs them, and, yeah, that, that land belongs to Leslie, which, uh...
Well, because the, the back trail up Mount Major, you go over straight back and then up the back trail, and that's why the town closed it back during COVID. We had hundreds of cars coming up every single day, and they, and they were parked so that Danny couldn't even get home, never mind get a fire truck up there. Yeah, it was horrible.
You'd probably still have them today, I mean, without parking.
Oh, sure.
Up on Route 11, they'd...
They know about it, yeah.
Well, it's, it's listed, it's listed. Oh, yeah, yeah. As a kid, I, that's the way we went up Mount Major, was the back way.
Yeah.
And I think it was Herman Cardinal that had big blueberry fields up there. So...
Yeah, it was amazing.
Yep.
They had a hearing here, state would redo 28 towards Wolfboro and, and 11 going north. And I had, at the meeting, I stood up and said, you know, is it any possible that you could widen the road a little bit there because of the, the parking? The state officials had no idea that people were parking at the side of the road. Now, I don't see how that's possible.
For Mount Major?
For Mount Major.
That's because they don't work on weekends.
A mile in either direction.
The DOT didn't. I don't think it, I don't think it used to be this way, though, didn't? This is just, this is new over the next, the past, I don't know, what, 15 years? I would say four or five years.
And if you look at the license plates, not very many in New Hampshire.
Nope.
Yeah. And it used to be the trail started down on what's 11D now, right on the corner before Della, was it Della Lodge? That was the way up, and maybe three or four cars would park there.
There's still a ski mobile trail down there.
Is there?
To get up to it.
Yeah, and we have ski mobile trails out through our property, but, you know, they, they come in and they fix the trails and...
Thank you, I've been through there.
Have you? And they've been there for a long, long time. My parents have been gone like 35 years, and it was long before my parents died.
That year was the only year you could do any snowmobile, the last ten, isn't it?
We went through there last year for sure.
Well, Bert just did, Bert just did something with the, the little bridge over there. Yeah. Bert did that. Any questions?
Thank you. Any other?
Thank you.
From public? Then please come up.
That's not about the case.
My only, my only question is, is there ac...
Huh? Your name, please.
My name is Wayne, Wayne Long, how are you? Hi, how's it going? So my only question on that subject is, is there access to snowmobile trails where Hanaford is, that section? Do you guys know?
Nothing to do with this case, then.
Snowmobile club.
Okay.
Plus, there's the website that shows all the trails.
Okay, I'll close public then. Back to the board.
Well, Mr. Chairman, case looks pretty straightforward to me. I would recommend that we...
Wait, hold on, thresholds, before you make a motion. Thresholds for active and substantial development.
24 months from the date of approval.
For what? Well...
Completed...
These are house lots, though, I mean...
Yeah, they're just lots. This lot, is that the intent?
One, one wants to build immediately, the other, you could wait five years, 10 years if you want, just a house lot.
Yeah, but I don't think we...
Yeah, but we're not, we're not liable to that.
Right, that's really just...
It's a lot of record, it's a lot of record.
Setting them on whatever they want.
This is, so essentially, that, that point, exactly, to the monument, basically.
There's no roads being built, so there's no... Construction other than the house. Thank you.
So monuments within 12 months?
Oh, yeah, they'll be there.
Yeah. Any other points? Do we have a motion then?
I motion that we accept case P-25-34. Approve, approve.
Conditions?
Yeah, we did accept it.
I'll second that. With conditions? For the monuments?
With them on, condition to the monument.
Subsequent and precedent?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Good thing, first period usually slow.
You got, you got four, four minutes to get to that Bruins game.
I got, I'm pretty slow. Three games, the other team scored within the first free shot.
My dad, my dad already scored, so it's...
Okay, old business. Jessica, discussion 2025-2026 Zack Committee?
So the Zack Committee has a meeting coming up on October 30th. They're going to be reviewing some more amendments. After that, the proposed amendments go to Town Council for review, and then the committee meets one more time on November 11th to finalize everything, and then they're going to be presenting on the November 18th meeting.
So that wouldn't be the same meeting as the CIP?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. It's a busy meeting.
All right.
Yep, I'll send out amendments as soon as I can, so you guys can start reviewing what's going on.
Yep. And then new business, approval of minutes.
Okay, so I'd like to discuss minutes again.
Yeah.
Okay, so August, as of August, we had a new minute taker. Since then, since the September meeting, we had to let the minute taker go.
They got definitely better from the new minutes.
Yes, so the two sets of minutes that are before you tonight are slightly problematic. Throughout the zoning board proceedings, it was found that some of the software that they were using is inadequate, and so the minutes are incorrect. So to rectify the two sets of minutes that are in front of you tonight, I'm going to have to go and review the meetings against the minutes to ensure that they're accurate because there were a lot of inconsistencies with the zoning minutes, and I don't feel comfortable with you guys just sort of reading what's in front of you and just approving it. I'm not okay with that.
So...
The second set for the last meeting were perfectly adequate for anyone to understand what was going on, and much shorter and succinct.
Yes.
I, I, I thought they were good, it didn't cut anything out, I thought they were well done.
Right.
Sorry, you're saying for all three months, or?
So it's, so it's just August and September. You may have received a copy of July, but those were, those were approved?
Yeah, okay.
So it's, it's the August... So it's, it's the August 19th and the September 16th that I would like to review for you prior to your approval.
I'll make a motion to table the approval of the meeting minutes for the last two, the August 19th and September 16th, 2025.
I second that.
Yep. All in accord?
Yeah.
Aye.
And I will be transcribing the minutes from tonight. We have nobody.
God bless you.
So we need, so I'm a plug, put in a plug. We're looking for a zoning and a planning transcriber for our minutes, if you know anybody. Thank you.
So the, the minutes from July were approved, Ben?
Correct.
Prior?
Yes.
Those look pretty good. All right. All right. Next correspondence, there's a memo you wanted to discuss regarding escrows.
Yes. So there are four escrow accounts that can be refunded back to the applicants. Those have to do with design review for stormwater and drainage. So these cases are all done, or case number three didn't, didn't follow through. He ended up not, not moving forward with the solar array that he had come in for. So he has, he has money to go back. Sorry, that was case number two.
Two.
So one, three, and four were design review, and case two is, he just, I guess, just withdrew.
Okay.
Got to clean up the accounts.
Yep. So for the record, it would be case P 2401 for $18.50, case P 2405 for $760, case P 2449 for $12.87, and case P 2436 for $265.
We have a motion to return those escrow funds?
So moved.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Any other business come before us? Nothing, and I have a motion to close the meeting then. We do public? Oops, sorry. Non-key specific? No. Pointing issue? Okay. With that, can I have a motion for adjournment?
Make the motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
To the Bruins game.